Mayor, recording has begun.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to our January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. I would like to officially call this meeting to order at six P. M. Madam Town Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Councilman Winkler.
Present.
Councilman Trolender.
Present.
Councilwoman Brian Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, and would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Before we go into that, I do have a few corrections for this agenda, and I would like to present them. If anybody has any other ones after I do this, please chime in. But on four point two, it should say F Y twenty-three instead of mid-year. And also, I would like to delete the recess. And I would also like to change on six point one, amendment to the town of La Plata fiscal year should read two thousand and twenty-three, and down below it should say fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three F Y twenty-three. With that, I would entertain a motion to accept, though if no one else has any other changes on that, to accept the amended agenda as just stated. Yes, please.
Why is it F Y twenty-three when we're in F Y twenty-four?
All right, do I have a motion to accept the amended agenda as stated?
Motion to accept the agenda changes as stated.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from meeting December nineteenth. If you all have had an opportunity to read that, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes with the with corrections. Section three dot four, it's just a minor spelling correction. First paragraph, last sentence, the employee cost is almost twenty percent, twenty-three percent higher. Higher is misspelled.
And was that the only one?
That's them.
And I would like to add that thorough instead of there's a through was put instead of thorough on there, too. So just another minor, and it is, I had it circled upstairs, so I apologize. But we can, we can find that on there. It was something that said Mayor James through instead of thorough. So those are the two changes, and I will entertain a motion to approve the gen, I mean, the minutes with those two minor changes.
Already made them.
Yeah, okay, so there's a motion on table, thank you, along with my correction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Motion carries. Brings us to public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to come up and provide some comment, I ask you that you state your name, your, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and limit it to three minutes. All right, moving on. The next one is Cornerstone. Come on down for the last time. So welcome, former State Senator Mac Middleton here for an update on Cornerstone. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Madam, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. It is my last time. My official retirement was actually yesterday, but after speaking with you and Brent, I decided I wanted to be here tonight. This is our bi-monthly meeting so that I could officially introduce you to our team that's going to be taking our place, taking, taking my place. And you all know Bernie Marsick and Chris Stues. But I just wanted to, before I introduce them, just to let you know what an honor it was for me, and I think I speak on behalf of our team to represent La Plata, both at the local level and at state level. You've been a pleasure to work with. You know, I think that we've done some really good things with, with La Plata, and I will assure you that I'm leaving you in good hands. Some of you have not met all of our team, but I will tell you that they're one of the best in Annapolis, and they work hard. You've got three of our best teams. So without further ado, we can introduce our team. And I think, Chris, Bernie, going to start things off?
Yes, I can actually start things off. First and foremost, I'm going to put into the chat here that we did have a PowerPoint for your presentation. Oh, sorry, but before we even get to that, I do want to, you know, just do our quick introductions. So my name is Christopher Duse. I'm Assistant Vice President here at the Cornerstone Government Affairs, supporting Bernie, Mac, and Tiffany, who are on the team to help move a lot of legislative initiatives for the town of La Plata. Background was in workforce development. Love working with Mac and looking forward to working with you all in the future. I'll pass it to Bernie.
Yes, good evening, Bernie Marsick. I've been with Cornerstone for five years and have been on the La Plata team since we started working with the mayor and Brent and you all on issues of priority. I did a lot of work at the local level, most recently in Inverness County before coming to Cornerstone, but got my start working for Congressman Erlich on Capitol Hill, and then as he became Governor Erlich in the State House. So pleasure to be with you all. I apologize I can't be there in person. Obviously, the session, it's quite challenging, but good to be with you, and I'll turn it to Tiffany.
Good evening, everyone. Tiffany Harvey, I think I'm the newest member to the Cornerstone team that is a part of the La Plata team. Very excited to be on board. I have spent a good amount of time in Charles County. Prior to coming into government relations about ten years ago, I practiced law for then Senate President Mike Miller in his law firm in Clinton, Maryland. So it's been a good amount of time in Charles County. And since coming into government affairs, I was Chief Legislative Counsel for Attorney General Ryan Frosch. I worked for County Angela Alsobrooks as Chief Legislative Counsel. And immediately before joining Cornerstone, I was with Comcast as their Vice President for Government and Regulatory Affairs in Maryland and in Delaware. Super excited to be on board and be a part of the Cornerstone team, and more importantly, looking forward to continuing the work with La Plata. Thank you.
Beautiful. I actually can share, I believe I have the power to share screen, so I can just pull it up right now. If that's easier for you all, just let me know if you can see the screen. Yes, that should be beautiful, or maybe I don't have control. So be it. Well, I mean, I'll just, let me see if I have control. Do I have control? I do not. But anyway, we want to shift to slide number two, so I can continue to tell you about the other members of the team, just so you know who is also going to be supporting you. So Cornerstone is not just, you know, we're far, we're far larger than just myself, Bernie, Mac, and Tiffany. We have an entire team that supports, and the way that we roll at Cornerstone is that we are a, we take a teams approach. So even though you see the four of us right now, we would still be supported by Patrick Hogan, who is a former governor's younger brother and was also a state delegate, working on environmental matters and things of that nature. Maggie McIntosh, who is the former Chair of Appropriations, knows everything budgets inside and out. John Bohannon, who is the former Chief of Staff to Congressman Steny Hoyer for about twenty-two years, and helped launch Cornerstone in Maryland. Delora Sanchez-Eficouché, who does a lot of the healthcare stuff, and really well connected with a lot of the budget members as well. Ellen Valentino, who handles a lot of our big business clients. Jenna Sublet, who supports the team in everything administration and has some clients of her own. Bernie Marsick, you know about, and then Shanetta Pascal, who helps us a lot on the federal level. With this level of support, we push the issues of the town of La Plata as a unit. Of course, you're going to be seeing our face, primarily myself, probably Bernie, primarily Tiffany, but just know that you have an entire team backing you. That being said, we can move to the next slide. Beautiful. So we have a list of priorities that we do want the members of the council to be aware of, that we are pushing, and just, not just to, you're probably already familiar with the initiatives, but we also want to make sure that you know what we're doing behind each one of them and some updates for each one as well. First and foremost, you should know that we have two primary budget initiatives that we're working with the General Assembly on to ensure that these two things are funded. I'm going to explain what both of them are and then what the funding levels are and what we've been trying to do to get them. One, as you already know, we got to get this police station up and running. We got some money put into, from the town of, put into the budget last year. This year, we're pushing for five hundred thousand dollars. Lot of support on that initiative. We're also fighting for funding to ensure that the Dorchester Community Center is well-funded and is able to go up and running. To that extent, we've spoken to the governor's office, Department of Budget and Management, had a meeting with them, had a meeting with each member of the District Twenty-eight delegation, and sent a letter to them as well requesting the funds. And we have talked to the Capitol budget members of both the House and the Senate to ensure that these initiatives are forefront and center. We should know where we're at, since the budget is going to be released tomorrow. And if our things are in the budget, that's good to go. If it's not, we're going to be pushing extremely hard to ensure that we get funding for both of these two projects. Before we get in, so that's the budget initiatives. I was going to stop for questions, but I do want to highlight, there's an extra initiative that is not currently on this slide deck, and that is tourism zones. And I know that the mayor is going to be testifying relatively shortly on a piece of legislation that was, I want to say, of the town of La Plata's brainchild, that kind of moved up to M M L and is now one of M M L's priorities. So Madam Mayor, if you wanted to speak on that, we wanted to pass the mic to you.
I am so excited about that. Thank you so much for mentioning that. Yes, on Thursday, I will be testifying in front of the Senate, Senate Bill fourteen, as we are terming that. We have quite a bit of support. I saw the governor last week, and he assured me that this is one of the things that he will, if it reaches his level, that will be passed. There's a lot of excitement and energy about this bill. And I found out also, the person that is going to be testifying in favor of this tourism zone, next to me is the Secretary of Commerce. So it is moving forward, and thank you, Christopher, for your support and all of C G A's support. And this, this will definitely help attract businesses and, and help the existing businesses with this tourism bill, because now we have the ability to take it local instead of having to, or hopefully we'll take it local instead of having it just on the state level.
Madam Chair, if I may just add.
Please.
Since this is an M M L, a piece of legislation, Cornerstone won't be, will remain neutral. However, if a member of the, of the council makes a request of us, as Evelyn did last year, when we were dealing with the, how the money from the recreational marijuana was going to be split up, then we can get involved. So, so we'll be monitoring with you and whatnot. So if you ever need our support, we would be there for you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And with that, I'm going to pass it over to the next initiative that we'll be supporting. And that has to do with, or an update more specifically, with the water appropriation. I believe Bernie Marsick on our team is going to speak to you all about that. So I'll pass it to you, Bernie.
Sure, thanks, Chris. And just to the prior point, I will be in the committee hearing with the mayor during the hearing Thursday on the tourism zones as well. On water appropriation, we have had numerous conversations with the Department of Environment. The most recent was in the fall, where one of the suggestions came through the possibility of looking to engage a facilitator with this issue to help move it forward. I know there's been numerous conversations as well with county commissioners and county staff. Most recently, the Acting C O, Deb Hall, has engaged with Brent in conversations, and I'll turn to Brent in a second, but see if he has any other input he wants to provide. But it seems that the, the ball is moving forward a bit more in recent weeks. So we're very pleased with that, and we'll continue to engage the department as needed other than the place. So Brent, any other input you want to add on that?
Yes, thank you, Bernie. The only input is that the town staff has met twice, and we are scheduling, we ran out of time last week, and it is my fault that I did not schedule a third meeting to finalize sort of our approach. And we're contemplating it, bringing it back to council in closed session to discuss before we reach back out to the county, see what their sort of response is to what we are proposing. And then at that time, as sort of Cornerstone has worked towards, you know, working with a third party if necessary, maybe that would be our approach. But at this time, we are still working internally to go back to, to the county administrative staff and the team of negotiators that the county has. So the ball's in our court, we're aware of that, and we're pressing to, to get something back to them, probably within, hopefully by the close of business Friday. Or at least, let me rephrase that, arrange the conversation with council in closed session to bring you up to speed on the specifics of the negotiation before we return a response to the county of Charles.
Are you scheduling a third meeting before the close business on Friday, or are you going to?
The third meeting would be before the close, but internally with our staff.
Oh, just internally on staff, not with them? And then by next week, we will know, we'll, we'll schedule a close.
Potentially, yeah, closed session. It may have to be the thirtieth, either prior to or after our budget retreat.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Manuel, when you say their team of negotiators, who does that consist of? And when we are going before that team, who do we have with us to help facilitate the conversation?
Yeah, prior, my understanding is the county's team of negotiators is Jake Dyer, who I think is the act, acting, was it budget? I'm not sure. Budget Director basically for the county, and Jason Groff, who he may be Acting Director of Planning, Planning and Growth Management. On our side, it was former Treasurer Kevin Greenfield and Bobby Stahl, Director of Operations. Karina has stepped into that role. So part of our internal, and then I'm taking obviously more of a, more part in the conversations now as well. So Karina's getting up to speed, and so we think, you know, we will be, hopefully, as I said, before close of business this week, we will be in a better position to update the council.
So Jake Dyer and Jason Groff are who you're calling their negotiators?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's no, okay, I just want to make sure that they have any experts coming before to tackle our team.
Just to follow up, if I may, so if it was Kevin, and now you're bringing Karina up to speed, you have not met in the last few months on this, then?
We have not. Yeah, we have talked to, I've talked to Deb Hall. Of course, Deb's new to being the acting, so she was not actively engaged with this process either. I think the county administrator, Mark Belton, if you will, was more involved with the negotiation team from the county side. So, you know, we're, we're working through this, and we hope to, but as sort of Bernie had indicated, there seems to be maybe a push for, to prioritize this more than it has been in the past, we'll say.
And has the letter gone out to the, to the town, I mean, to the county asking for a meeting? As long as there was a.
We're trying to work through this internally and then working with the county staff to see where we are before we would schedule any type of meeting between the county commissioners and the town council.
There was a request for a mediator, so that has not gone out yet.
No, because we are where Deb Hall and I met, or actually talked, and we thought it would be better to try to work it out internally and get it to a better position. We've got to disagree before we need a mediator, so we're hoping we can avoid that part of the process.
Excellent.
If I may just add, Madam Mayor, prior to the conversations with Deb that Brent has had, I met with President Collins about the idea, the concept that had been suggested by M D E to have a facilitator so we can start some discussions, try to get to first base. Subsequent to that, I met with Deb Hall and gave her all the information that I had. She was excited about that. And then Brent had met with her, and they thought that, you know, rather than hiring a facilitator, because apparently what had happened in the past, there was a lot that was lost in communication, and that, you know, it's, the communication hasn't been a two-way street. She said, rather than getting a facilitator, let's work at staff level, see if we can't get some, some finality to this before going, going to getting a facilitator.
I love that.
And that's what's transpired with.
Thank you, that, thank you for that. That, that's, I think, the right step to take on that.
And then.
Sorry.
They're still there, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to turn it to Chris to go to Route Six, but sorry.
Yes, no, you're totally fine, Bernie. So moving right along to the second project that we're kind of looking at and getting updates on is the Route Six Corridor. As you all are probably already aware, the governor has been talking a great deal about transportation cuts and transit funding. So one of the things that we're concerned about is, of course, I believe it's two million dollars that have been cut from the budget regarding Route Six, and so we're having conversations about how do we, you know, not lose access to that funding. I know that there's a, you know, preliminary investigation that's happening on May the fifteenth, and then it's going to be opening up for public comment mid-June. I know that there's conversations happening now with our team, as well as Brent and the State Highway Administration. I believe the State Highway Administration has informed us that they want to kind of keep the conversation staff to staff. So I can pass that over to Brent if he has any updates that he wants to acknowledge on that, but we are watching that very closely.
Yeah, Chris, I have nothing further than what you've already provided.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. And with that, I'll pass it over to Bernie to talk about the Box Elder project.
Okay, Box Elder, I know there's conversations as well. I think the mayor with a couple of the commissioners, county commissioners regarding his property, I think everyone thinks it'd be ideal for EMS location. I will defer to the mayor if there's any updates or Brent, based on these conversations. But it seems as if, there seems to be some agreement as to the use, just a matter of moving forward now.
I do, I did put together a request for a letter of support to have the town manager send out a request for, to be, for the commissioners to write a letter of support. Can you give us an update on if that has been?
I cannot, because it slipped through the cracks. I apologize.
Okay, that, and, and that's what Ruben and B J have been asking for, is something in writing so that we can come forward again for a letter, to request for a letter of support, so that we can acquire that property.
Madam Mayor, could.
Yes, go ahead.
If you would, Mike, could you go back to the Charles Street, Maryland Six project? So I know there was a cut of two-point-something million dollars, and you said something about another public meeting. Is that going to be this coming spring? Is that what I understand you said?
Yes, yes, May fifteenth of this year is when they're doing the preliminary investigation, and it's supposed to have open comments, so the public can comment in mid-June. I don't have the exact date, when in mid-June. Mac may probably speak more to that, but yes, a preliminary investigation, May the fifteenth, and then in mid-June, open for public comment.
Hearing. Great, and so I'm glad to hear that, because I attempted to reach out to the state in October, and then a couple of weeks ago, and never heard a word back about, because their website on the project talks about under design, and so I asked a question, would there be any more public input? So I'm glad that that's been confirmed, so I appreciate that work to do that. Originally, they told us that they would have it ready for sometime in December. Right. It's, it's been pushed back now to. And I understand that. But he says, the person I talked to said they're on course for it. May fifteenth, they've got a date, May fifteenth. So, so we'll know probably tomorrow when the governor releases his budget, if that project still, is still in the C I P or, or some reduced number or whatever, right? Hopefully. Everything we've gathered, it's still in the C I P. Just reduced. When I talked to the folks last week, I tried to get an idea of exactly what the two million dollar cut was. Was it state funding? Was it federal funding or what? The person didn't have the information, but she said she'd get back to us. So we're waiting for them to get back to us on it. Or we'll see, you know, tomorrow, what's in the budget. Thank you. And a lot of times with the past administration, they didn't like to reveal anything until after the budget had been released, and this administration may be following the same course, not to give out a lot of information till the budget's actually been released. I get it. Thank you.
More.
Yeah, one last project, it's a highlight, and that's, of course, the sidewalks on Washington Avenue. As you all know, this is a project that started spanning decades now. It's connecting Waldorf to La Plata. And as you also know, that there's about eighty thousand dollars that's in the county appropriations to ensure that this project is taken care of. However, we have gotten some word that, you know, they're trying to move that money in a different direction. Let me see, what else did I have to highlight? I know that Mac did phenomenal work, working with the county and the town and kind of bringing those forces together in the last two years to kind of start making progress on that eighty thousand, basically spending that money to actually get these sidewalks put in place. I know Brent and Mac have more information about that, but we just wanted you guys to know that we'll be watching that issue rather closely and ensuring that the money, you know, goes where it's supposed to go. But Mac or Brent, do you guys want to highlight anything on the Washington Avenue?
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Yeah, one of the things, we've sort of hit a little bit of a snag with the Radio Station Road project, where it sort of comes into play with county properties. So we're working through that now with Mead and Hunt as our consultant. At one point, it was talked about taking the money that they had, which was roughly eighty-five thousand dollars, and moving that from Washington Avenue to the Radio Station Road Trail Project. I don't know that that's still into consideration, so hopefully that money will stay with Washington Avenue, because we think there's a lot of value, and I think there's a lot of value with Radio Station Road, but we also see value in Washington Avenue sidewalk as well. So we're hopeful that that's not going to be affected. At the same time, we are making progress on the Radio Station Road, sort of getting that to the M O U stage, which will bring it back to council for approval, is my understanding. So we're hopeful that with, working with the county, for the county to take on some of the responsibility for the Radio Station Road project from, I think it's from the park, the county park, all the way up to Rosewick Road. So we're working through the details in that process, like I said, with Mead and Hunt, and we hope to obviously come to some sort of an agreement on that, as well as have that money still available in the Washington Avenue sidewalks project.
Thank you.
And now is our time for reopening up for questions, if you guys have any. But generally speaking, that's all the initiatives that we are considering for the town of La Plata, the budget considerations, Box Elder, Route Six, water appropriation, and of course, the Washington Avenue sidewalk situation, and the mayor's tourism bill conversation. So that's pretty much it for us. Anything you guys want to open it up, or questions, or can we?
Any questions from council? Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you both for your presentation, and Senator Milton, thank you so much for your service to the town and our area. I hope you have an exciting agenda for yourself in retirement. I did have a couple of questions, just specifically about how we set the agenda. And maybe first, as far as Cornerstone's role in helping the town, as I understand it, each administration has their own agendas, right? We went from, I think, a period of, of excess now to a period that we're looking at now of, of less than that, with cuts expected to be made known to municipalities and counties and everything else statewide. What is Cornerstone's role in identifying opportunities for the town that line up with our current administration? Is that something that you reach out to Mr. Manuel about, as far as what you know about the town of La Plata? Or is that something that we proactively reach out to you with types of things that we're interested in doing in the future that may line up with our current government actors that we're dealing with?
Sure, I'm happy to take that. I think it's both, actually, to answer your question directly. So we look at different funding priorities as they're laid out by the town as far as immediate priorities. You know, Chris talked about the Police Station Community Center. We're looking at either having that money included in the governor's budget or having that money go through the bond bill process. Secondly, if there are other opportunities that we know of that are coming from the administration. by the administration from the governor's office. Whether it's for transportation projects, public safety projects, you know, environmental projects. You know, a good example is something like any of the infrastructure dollars that are coming through the, from the federal level down into the state often are being pushed down to the local level. So any of those opportunities that we see could be through housing, community development, it could be through transportation and others. So really, any that we think are a good opportunity for the town, we share those immediately. And then the third is also our team shares any opportunities coming from the federal level through the, what we call as the Ops Watch. We have one that's specially tailored toward the town and sent out every week of different federal grants that are out there. Again, these range from EPA to interior to transportation to you name it, as far as federal opportunities. So those are more general, but also tailored toward the local government. So it's all really state opportunities as well as federal opportunities. So if there are specific projects, we'd be happy to work with you all to identify, you know, other possible sources as well.
Okay, thank you. I kind of kind of piggybacking off of that, and this may be more of a question for Ms. Manuel. When do we typically have our legislative agenda set?
We're trying to establish a calendar, so we bring these things on a regular basis now that we have a relationship with Cornerstone. Same thing with transportation priorities, which I know is near and dear to Councilman Jenkins. A lot of times we get notification that the state will be over at the county on a, you know, on a Tuesday and they're going to be there on Thursday. So we need to, we trying to set our calendar so that we can have these things. And if have a discussion at the council level where you guys, if you have priorities or initiatives you want to undertake entail, we can sort of get those to the right people. And a lot of times, as Bernie said, with the federal, a lot of times Cornerstone is able to translate those federal opportunities down to us at a state level. Because, you know, there's a lot of grant money out there, but they do a great job of identifying things and putting round circles and round holes as opposed to sometimes local governments try to put, do the opposite, put the square peg in the round hole. So we're fortunate to have that as an asset. And as Bernie mentioned, the Op Watch that we received weekly that we can scan through, a lot of things don't really apply to us. But, you know, in the event that there are, the Cornerstone staff does a good job of highlighting those for its particular to the town of La Plata.
Right, so obviously we've got principles and concepts that we're always interested in that are probably communicated. But I think sometimes what's a little concerning, at least from my standpoint, and I may be the only one in the in the closet, so to speak, peering out, seeing what of our, some of our specific legislative items. Like, how are those determined by the town? Is that a joint effort between mayor and manager? Or is that just, we've got a lot of things that were on the list that have been on, obviously Route six, long time coming.
Right.
There are a number of these that have been well established that for some reason we still haven't gotten through. But how is the specific legislative agenda set for the following year?
Well, I think this year it was a matter of it was, it's the same as it was last year. We still need money for Dorchester. We still need money for a future public safety facility. Now, that's why I'm talking to you about trying to get something on this calendar so that we can hear from council. I think it's sort of snuck up on us this year. That's my fault. I'll take the blame for that. But I think moving forward, we need to do a better job of sort of scheduling these things out so we can have communications with council and find out if there's something indirectly or directly that you would like us to investigate, we can definitely do that.
I just know that, you know, we have got consulting firm that's as busy and as active as other clients. We want to actively give them our highest priority things. And if things kind of fall off just because they didn't get done, doesn't mean maybe those are our focus or our goal moving forward. And we know the legislative calendar is the same, right, every year. So I'd appreciate, I think that's a great idea to set establish template of some sorts of having a come together meeting, which is, this is as important as our budget meetings, honestly, because there's so much funding available out there. And if we're not communicating with our delegates and are, you know, using the resources that we're paying for, we're losing out on opportunities. So thanks for enlightening me on that.
If I may, so you understand what you're getting by paying for Cornerstone. You know, we monitor the budget very, very closely. And there's the operating side and then there's the capital side. So and the capital and the budget starts with the governor early on, starts in September, October. So we start engaging with the town. We have to, as far as the capital budget, we need to know your priorities so that we can then get them and then start working for you. So and we got those from you. We got a letter from the mayor that the, these are the priorities that they went over today, the $500,000. And then the, and then the other project that we have for the, for the police station. So we knew what your priorities were. And then we went and set up the meetings with DBM people to make sure that, to see if we couldn't get it in the cap, the governor's capital budget. But we're not going to rely on that totally. So then we executed the meetings with the chairs of the, of the capital budget subcommittees as well as Guy Gazone and others that, that are on the budget committees. In addition to that, if that fails, then we also want to work with the local delegations because there's what's called LBI's, Local Bond Initiatives, that they can introduce those. So we've been working for you. Just on the budget this year. I think the last couple of years with the federal monies, we've gotten spoiled by having all that money. There's sort of the expectation that it's still there. We had Guy Gazone speak to our clients about two weeks ago. And he said it brilliantly, when you look at, you know, over the last 10 to 12 years, we're back to normal. Those couple of years that we had all this money were somewhat abnormal. When you compare this year's budget year with the deficit that we have, it's sort of like almost all those years that I spent in the legislature where there's a projected deficit every year. So they're not as bad as we, we think they are. I think when you look at the merits of the project, we at Cornerstone feels that the projects that La Plata has are very meritorious. And we're going to fight for them, try to get the funding for you, so.
I'm sorry, you said you received a letter from the mayor stating?
We got, we, we asked, I think we got, maybe it was from Brent. We asked for the town to identify what its legislative capital budget priorities were. And what we got back was that it was the, the funding for the police station and funding for Dorchester. And that's when.
It was from you.
So.
I'd like to look that up.
Okay, I would like to see that, Brent.
Thank you for that clarification because you're right, it is important and the calendar is a great idea. And I would just piggyback on what Councilman Challenger said, that a calendar would help. And there are opportunities where we could do that on our own. For instance, we're going to, every year we have a, I don't know how we can synchronize it, but we can. I think we have a budget retreat every year that's in January. And we, and we get the departments to talk about their budget issues. But we have documents in place today that can help us prioritize that and link it with the budget. We have our comp plan 2020, and then now we have our new, our 2022 strategic plan. So I'm hoping that we use those documents because that's what we paid money to do and to use them. You know, so it's important that we have, for me, that we follow that kind of a process. So we're not necessarily pulling things out of the air, that they are based in documents and priorities that are in our plans. And I remember from the tornado, because we had a vision plan, that went a long way at that time to get funding for the feds and the state to fix La Plata after tornado. So I, so I'm just, would urge us to continue to do that, hopefully. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Well, I would like to say thank you so much for all that you've done for the town the last year and a half, two years. I know you have been able to secure us close to $15 million. And that is $15 million more than we had. And, and we would have been able to get because of your connections, because of you advocating for us. And even going forward with the Dorchester Community Center, which is such a needed facility in this town, as well as the, the police station. You have really made a difference in our town and I personally want to thank you, so.
Thank you very much. My heart and soul has been in it because I care deeply for La Plata, always did. And I'll say as my final word to you, even though I'm not working with Cornerstone, if ever there's a need that the team feels that I can help them, I'm there to help them, so.
You really are retiring.
I am. When I say retire, I'm retiring from Cornerstone. I'm taking on, I'm not retiring from family farm and family friends and farms.
Good, good. That's what you need to do is relax. Thank you.
Can I just add one?
Sure.
Personal comment. Thanks, Mac, for everything because I'm going to show my age here. We go back and I remember when I first got involved and you were a county commissioner in the courthouse. And I did a board of appeals case at the time. And so I think back on that. And so I just want to say for me at least, thank you very much for all you've given to the community.
Thank you very much.
Of Cross County and La Plata, but also Southern Maryland, because you were instrumental in doing a lot of things through the Tri-County Council. So I want to appreciate, thank you for that personally.
God gave me a very special opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Thank you, CGA. Appreciate it and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, next on our agenda is FY23 budget amendment. Come on down.
Hey, good evening.
Oh, you can sit down if you want, whatever you're comfortable.
Shouldn't take long. I mean, there's a few items here that I'm requesting a budget amendment to align the budget with the actual expenses. Are there any question regarding these amendments?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the updated information. I just, now I understand it's for FY23 because you're doing the audit. So this project that are being, money's being put in, did that or has it any effect on those projects that are in the budget or those?
It's basically just realigning the actual expenses with the budget because we can't be over budget. I mean, for example, let's talk about the Tillman Lake.
Okay.
Originally, okay. Do you want me to explain?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Originally, it was budgeted in streets, but after evaluating the actual purpose of that trail, it really should go to parks. So I'm merely just moving that budget to where the activity really should have happened.
So it doesn't affect actual the street budgets or sidewalks?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed clarification on. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I am looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation, Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Orr?
Yes.
Councilman Jacobs?
Yes.
We will see this again in just a bit. Thank you so much. And now we have the Mary Ball Sewer Pump Station replacement. Come on down.
Mary, Council, good evening. Thank you. First, I'd like to just acknowledge my team. Last night, we did plow snow throughout the town. We finished up about 3:30 this morning. And another long day today, we had a water leak over on Worcester. So we were over there fixing that as well. So it's, it's been a, a long two days. But I think, as you probably noted this morning, I think the streets were in pretty good shape for where we had been. And it was good that we went out and we spread a lot of salt, plowed some slush out of the road and got everything cleared out so that there weren't any issues this morning for town residents. So I want to just acknowledge that and acknowledge my crews that were out there really working hard at that. Tonight, I bring you the Mary Ball Pump Station upgrade. I'm not particularly happy with the price that I bring forward. I have to tell you that where we thought this would come out and where the bids actually came out were considerably different. And as I'm sure you know, today, price escalation is just enormous in a lot of this. When we budgeted for this originally, we had set aside $400,000 for pump station upgrades to three of our pump stations. And we've got those on order and they should be coming out soon. And we had about $600,000 left for the Mary Ball upgrade. We also, because of public works agreements with Triumph and with Magnolia Gardens, we added $150,000 to that total for about $750,000. You know, we did this several years ago and felt like that that should be more than adequate for this project. As I had been working with McCrone on these recently, we felt that the bids should come in somewhere between $750,000 and a million. So we felt that it was over where we had originally thought it was. But when we received the bids, I was greatly surprised. You know, when the lowest bid was almost double where we were for the $1.53 million. I have to tell you, I was very shocked by it. So I, I can say that I was pleased. And I also have to say that that doesn't even include the pumps because we bought the pumps. If you remember, we went ahead and bought both the pumps for both stations. So we already own the pumps and they're sitting down at the plant. This is basically just using, upgrading the existing station that's there and then putting another smaller station in. And so I do think that it's high, but that's just where the prices are today. And I worked with both of the lower two contracts. We had three bids, Gradient Construction, Johnston Construction and Sogras Construction all bid. As you can see, there was roughly $300,000 between each one of those bids. I went back to Gradient and asked them to take a look at their bid and see. They feel they have a good and reasonable bid. I went back to Johnston, to Marty Workinger and asked him actually to clarify some of the things on his bid even. And he was in second place at 1.8. And he didn't feel as though, and, and to be perfectly honest, I think that Gradient had gotten a little bit better pricing on some of the subwork, like electrical and things like that, which gave them a little bit of an advantage in their number. But I don't really see where there were major pieces of this that were there. I've talked to Karina about this. Of course, as you know, we've taken lots of money in for major facilities this year. We've probably taken in about nine million in major facilities this year. I meant last year, yeah, seven million. But I mean, we have a large amount of major facility fee. So we do have plenty of money in the fund that's designed to do these types of projects. So in this situation, just to make this and, and cut off the discussion, although I'm more than happy to take questions. We're recommending that currently we utilize the $510,000 in ARPA funds, the $150,000 in reimbursement from developers in Triumph and Magnolia Gardens from the public works agreements, and then use the remainder in major facility fees. Now, I have to say that Karina and I were talking and we may, through the budget process, actually reallocate some ARPA funds back to this because it will spend ARPA funds quickly and we could allocate those. So as part of the budget process, and if we do that, we would come back to the council and ask for that approval to be able to do that. But what I'd like to do is to get this project moving. As you know, the, this, the reason for the. As you know, the, this, the reason for these upgrades is because of all the construction that's happening on the north side of town. And the apartments at Rosewick Crossing are scheduled for completion in June. And so we really need to get these upgrades to the Mary Ball Pump Station moving forward. We had waited for quite some time to get MDE's approval. We do have those permits at this point. And so we would like your approval to move forward with the contract for $1.53 million and award this contract to Gradient Construction.
Do you have any questions from council? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Director Stahl, and certainly understand the need and the process you go through. Just two, I guess a question, you talked about completion. So do you have an, in a perfect world, estimated start date and completion date?
They're willing to start right away. They are willing to start as soon as we award the contract. They'll start working on shop drawings. And then as soon as we approve those shop drawings, they'll move forward with the procurement of those items. As you know, I ordered the pumps ahead of time and so we actually have those in stock. The big challenge today are certainly electrical and controls. They're two very long lead time issues. They certainly feel as though they can meet our deadlines as long as the procurement of the electrical and controls items don't take them way out into the future. Certain items, probably the generator is the one I'm most worried about. We will, we have kind of a workaround in that. We'll utilize one of our portables in the meantime to be able to power that up. But, you know, we're still waiting for the generator for down at Southwest Quadrant and that's been on order for almost two years now. So it has been a significant lead time issue. We feel, I do have a workaround in place for it up there. There, we will have to set up a pump around. And they're going to have Xylem come in and set up the pump around to be able to pump utilizing the existing force mains. So when they're building the actual, the existing pump station, they will have to have a pump around in place the whole time. We have the pumps, the pump around pumps set up large enough that they'd be able to handle any additional flows that we need. So if we're still waiting and the Rosewick Apartments open up, we will continue to use the pump around as a mechanism to handle the flows in the lead up to the electrical delivery. So I mean, I'm not worried about our workaround in this situation. We will have a workaround for it and it won't cause us any problems with overflow. But, you know, I do have to tell you, all of these things are making things more drawn out. It's just a challenge with today's, you know, I actually was reading Kiplinger. I think it was two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, I get the Kiplinger letter. And they actually mentioned in the Kiplinger letter that electrical lead times for all electrical and controls equipment is ridiculously long and sometimes can be a year to two years waiting on some of the big switchgear.
Thank you and thanks for the crew work on the snow because I was out at eight o'clock and oh, and I heard them go by at 3:30. Thank you.
Yeah, we were all over there. As a matter of fact, we finished up in Clark's Run. So, yes.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Stahl, why do you think there's such a significant difference between Sager's and Gradient? And have we used Gradient before?
We have used Gradient. Gradient actually bid, built the pump station at Southwest Quadrant. They actually did the Southwest Gravity Sewer Line down to the plant. So we've used them several times.
So why do you think their fees are so much lower than the other two?
I would say two things. One, Gradient is a local. They're from Calvert County. And so they generally, you know, we know their crews, they're all Southern Maryland people. They're not a union. Or, you know, don't have the wage scales that they would have up around town. Sogres is from Alexandria. And, you know, they're a reputable company, but their pay scale is on a Washington DC area. And so they're on a much higher pay scale.
So is salaries that's causing the difference?
Well, I would say that it's on several things. They're very used to doing business with DC Water, with Alexandria Water. They're used to dealing with a much more union oriented and not, and I'm not trying to be negative about that, but it does drive costs up a little bit more by being up in that area. So I think that's what drives their price. Johnston, on the other side of the coin, actually comes out of York, Pennsylvania. So they come down, they, we've done work with them. They did the plant upgrade. They did the E and R upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant back in 2014. We were very pleased with their work as we have been with Gradient. But a lot of theirs gets bid a little bit higher because they are coming down from Pennsylvania. There's a lot of travel time back and forth that adds some additional cost. So I do think Gradient gets a little bit of advantage in being local.
Because there's a significant difference. It's not a little difference. And it goes between.
It's 20% higher. I mean, it's 300,000 on a 1.5 million dollar bid. So it's, it's a significant differential. But that's why we go through a bidding process and, you know, sometimes, you know, with all these guys, sometimes they win, sometimes they have an advantage that they can take advantage of. In this case, Gradient was able to do that.
Okay, no worries. I just, you know, I know cheaper is not always better. We've seen that before. And so I just wanted to know why the difference was because I would think that the construction costs and supply costs would be impacting them just like it's doing with Johnston and Sager's, is what you say. I think the, the cost for equipment and supplies would be the same. So I just wanted to know what the difference was because it is a significant difference between.
It can be, for instance, electrical contractor. One electrical contractor may have more labor in it, may have different bids for different items and they could be higher.
Sure.
You know, I was texting back and forth with Marty Workinger today to try and figure some of it out. You know, he felt that he, the bids that he had gotten were reasonable and that they were good, but he said, you know, just the, the package pump station that they bought, the, the package that came through Sherwood Logan and the electrical were a very large percentage of their package. So it is what it is.
Thank you for your team. Well, yeah, and I know it is what it is, but I still just wanted to have an understanding.
Yes.
And thank you and your team for being out because I was out in the dark going to work to make sure that my team could get in. So it was greatly appreciated. Any other questions?
Yes. Director Stahl, thanks for bringing this to us. Question about the imperative of this project. You stated in reference to the new residential units going in in Rosewick that should be, I think you said, open in June?
That's, that's their estimation.
They're planning. What if there were some unforeseen circumstances with getting these upgrades done? And this did not get accomplished by June? What is the?
We could do a pump around. We would, we would set up a pump around.
Okay.
We have the ability in this situation to be able to, and listen, whether we do changes at the wastewater treatment plant, whether, when we go to upgrade this station, for instance, we will put a plug in a manhole before the wet well and we will pump it around. We will pump it through the force main, which will then take it up to 301 and it'll gravity flow down to the plant. So we're going to set up a pump around in this so that they can work in a clean wet well to do all the upgrades that are necessary. My plan was always that if we run into delays, we would leave the pump around in place for an extended period of time so that we're, we're going to have the pumps set up large enough so that, you know, we know that this is going to open up. And, you know, it will be something where, you know, we would just run it for an extended period of time.
I guess let me ask you a different scenario and be more direct. What if, what if we weren't to approve the upgrade based on these costs, I mean, so, so much higher than what we had estimated? What's the impact to these residences on Rosewick or otherwise? What is the purpose of this upgrade that we need to make sure that this gets done?
Along with everything else, there's always going to be hurdles. I mean, to be honest, as you know, I waited for that permit for six months when I told MDE, this is a damn emergency. I need to get this out. Because theoretically, MDE could have turned me down for the upgrade. I, you know, we, we have numerous phases in this. I like to say that, you know, my job as your director of operations isn't to decide whether projects go in. I don't, you know, I, if you or the planning commission approves a development project, my job is to make sure that we provide all of the resources for that project. Sewer, water, trash, roads, streets. I work through all of those things. And to be honest, you know, are there hurdles in this where you get setbacks and things don't work? Sure, but we just keep working on it and keep moving forward.
Yeah, I just want to be able to give an explanation to a resident if they're asking, hey, you're spending 1.5 million on a, on an upgrade. What is it that's getting done here? Is this an increased capacity?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
But you're also getting a much newer pump station. So you're taking older infrastructure and you're going to improve that by now having a very modern pump station. So we're, we're taking what is operating as one pump station now and we're going to be operating two pump stations at the same location. We decided not to, and so we're utilizing two force mains up there and we're going to split the flow between two force mains, which is going to save money because we don't have to put a new force main in. But yes, is it a capacity group? Absolutely. It is a capacity upgrade. And it's very reasonable. Every single new residence in the town of La Plata pays a major facility fee, which we had analyzed. If you remember several years ago when we analyzed, every new residence is paying $16,280, every single one. And that goes into the fund to fund these upgrades. So the current residents and the current rate payers, this isn't paid for out of rate. This is paid for out of that major facility fee, which is paid by the new residents.
Okay, so this older infrastructure is how old?
The Mary Ball, the one we're using today is about 16 years old. It was put in in 2008. So it is 16 years old. The even older Mary Ball Pump Station that we're replacing with the new, the newest one that we're putting in there, that one's about probably 40 years old. So there's, we currently have two pump stations up there. We don't use the oldest one. We use the newer one. But now with the capacity upgrade, we're going to use the force main for both of them. We split that flow and we'll now have two pump stations that are brand new. And so that infrastructure is good. I mean, that's, that's what we try to do. We try to upgrade where we can and, you know, have the newer infrastructure. And it's what we're doing, for instance, all over. We're replacing the Diggs Circle Pump Station, which is 35 years old. We're getting a brand new one. We're replacing the Patuxent Court Pump Station and we're going to have a brand new one. There're going to be quite a few pump station upgrades that we've done and it's, and it's very positive.
So as I understand it, this will make us more efficient, right?
Absolutely.
This will be cost effective for the long term. That's great. The second question I had is sounded like $150,000 that we have kind of to the side, that's not ARPA money or major facility fund money is from, you said, from Triumph and Magnolia. Those were developers?
Correct.
Okay, for public works agreements that we had.
We made them make an additional contribution based on the percentage of the job. We asked them for an additional 100, we asked Triumph for an additional $100,000 contribution. And even though they paid all their major facility fee, we asked them to contribute another 100,000 to that till. We did the same thing on Magnolia Gardens. So they paid all their major facility fees. But in addition to that, we asked them for another $50,000 in financial contribution.
Was any of this, or are any perceived financial contributions from the apartments going up in Rosewick that you said that we need to get this ready for in June? Like, are they, have they contributed to any of this?
That's Triumph.
Okay.
It's a joint contribution for that whole area up there. So it's the apartments, the Audi, all of that whole developer, Rick Rick Bailey, sorry.
So that ends up being about 10% of what we're talking about, right? Like 150 out of the 1.53?
Correct.
Is that, huh, seems low? Is that?
Well, when you add in that he also paid one, the Rosewick Apartments, Mr. Bailey paid 1.8 million dollars in major facility fees up there, correct? Yeah. It's, he paid a tremendous amount in major facility fees as well.
So that is going to the general?
No, it goes into the major facility fee funds, which is for, which is for all sewer and water projects.
Yeah. Okay. Those are the questions I have on this. Thank you, Director Stahl.
All right, any other questions from council?
Answer mine.
Okay, with that, I'm looking for a consensus to lead, to move this to legislation, Councilman Winkler.
I move that we move this towards legislation.
All right, Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Thank you so much. We'll see you in a bit. Next comes up the Town Council Rules of Procedure Annual Review. And oh, you can take a seat for that one, aren't you? I hope that you all have had the opportunity to review this and any questions that you may have for Director Fitz or Mr. Manuel. That would be wonderful. I will open up the floor right now unless you need to say anything beforehand.
Uh, no ma'am, just to, we do not expect this to be a completed document and approved and all the wording, the new wording, if there is any, completed tonight. I fully plan to bring this back once we finish discussing what needs to be changed.
Wonderful. I, do you have? I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Director Fitz. I just have a concern about a lot of the things that we have in these rules and rules of procedure that we're not honoring. And I'm concerned by it. And I don't know how we get to the point because there's no accountability. Nobody's holding us accountable. Every town council member must have equal opportunity to participate in decision-making. The will of the majority must be carried out. The town council must act as a body. We don't act as a body. We do not. We have a mayor that acts as a mayor and we, the town council, are pretty much left out. We're blindsided constantly. So I, I'm concerned and I don't know how we get to a place where these things are being held in account. We're held accountable for. Section 1 dot dash 2, be the town council's rules of procedure must be followed consistently. They are not. Section 2 dot 3, I mean, I have so many discrepancies and I want to know how do we, you know, when we put these things together, who is going to hold the council and the mayor accountable? We hold the town manager accountable. Who's holding us accountable? Because I don't feel like there's any accountability. And I'm going to tell you tonight, I am absolutely frustrated. And I don't know what else to say. So I feel like it's a pointless exercise to wordsmith this and make it all neat and package it well. And there's no one that's going to hold us accountable for it. Any other comments?
Well, I, I think we're looking, we're looking for an answer as to who holds, I think the answer is the council holds themselves accountable.
I guess maybe the question I think that, I think I, I would, I would be curious about is if internally, if there was, if there was a conflict, right? Like if, if we felt like these rules and procedures weren't being followed, what is the process? And that's maybe not conceived of in, in the body of itself, the, the body of the document. But what is our process and procedure if the policies and procedures aren't being followed? I guess that's a big, that's a big question, probably not anticipated by the, the agenda structure tonight.
We have asked for a meeting with the Town Attorney to have a discussion about the way things are working. And we've not had that yet.
I think he was thinking February, so it's, I've talked to him about that. So I can make sure it's still on his radar. I know eventually, initially, we were talking of January. And I forget what the reason was that we kicked it back to February. But it was going to be a sort of closed session organizational meeting with, with the council that qualifies for closed session. So I definitely, uh, I have a meeting with him tomorrow, so I will definitely bring that up to him. I know he wants to be here. I think he wants to be here in person for that, so. But yeah, I mean, it sounds to me like this is something we need to consider amending. The rules of procedure to include is the, you know, specifically state how and if a member is found to be, other than, you know, we do have a, an ethics commission. I don't know if this would raise to the, it's not really an ethics violation as much as it's a procedural violation of council.
Yeah, and I, I don't want Councilwoman Bryant Ward to, to be the only one speaking about frustrations about how policies and procedures are applied. I think, I think, I, I think it's different when you join onboard and, and I think everybody wants the best for the town. But I do find myself finding out a lot of information in the middle of a meeting or finding out a direction that we're going much later than I, I think we work together as a team. And, you know, perhaps that's something we can all work together on. But I think being so far into this term, you know, and finding out we're setting our legislative agenda without having a, a plan or a purpose or, or doing this collaboratively is, is disheartening. And, you know, I think, I think we can work together and I think it's salvageable, right? But I do, you know, it's, it is frustrating to, to look at the document and see, hey, we're all kind of called to represent the town folks the same. But often finding out things way later. When we get residents asking us about particular items that are being acted upon and we have no answer because it's never been presented. And yet there are back channels going on left and right. And we find out, that's, that's a weird spot to justify to a resident what their taxpayer money is going to if we've got people acting, you know, in a sole capacity. And that there's, there's reason for that. And there's lots of different roles and responsibilities for each of us. But I don't, you know, I want to be clear, you know, Councilwoman Bryant Ward's not the only one that's experienced some frustration on this. But I think we can work together to figure this out.
As the newest member of the council, I will certainly, uh, I, I'm glad to hear a, a seasoned councilperson such as Councilman Ward say how frustrated she is. Because as the newest member, there is a sense of you don't know what you don't know. And one of the things that I was going to bring in twenty twenty-four was the idea that as a group, if the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, we'll never accomplish anything. And that's just, I, 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 I sat at, at night reading this document and, and the first thing that came to my mind is why is there nothing in here about regular work sessions for ideas to be developed? To, hey, this is what we're seeing, we need to change. Rather than coming in here at six P M. on a weekly basis and reading an agenda and going, well, I don't know anything about that. And how many updates in the agenda came through today? Three? I, I, I'll be honest with you, I can't, I, I'm not standing around waiting for the update on my agenda to come in. God forbid it was something of critical or significance where a decision had to be made. I, I would say that, you know, agreeing with, with councils frustration, to me, that's where it starts. If the, if the body can't meet on a regular basis, then we're all busy. And I know no one wants to, to, everybody's time is very limited. But I think that's where the focus needs to start. Because then a lot of your frustrations in the various, holding people accountable, holding things accountable, that will eventually work itself out.
I mean, I should, I mean, I, I, I share the frustrations as well. And, uh, and, and, and tonight was, was a pretty good explanation and this document too. And, and I'll bear with you one quick example. So it talks about agendas and then we had this agenda request form. Okay. I think I submitted seven and they go through the council and some have been denied. And that's, okay, that's fine. But there's at least four or five that are, that are a year old. And we've never had any action, whatever. That's frustrating. And then tonight, one of the priorities that we want to seek, and I'm not picking on them, but it's out there for me. So we want more money for Dorchester. Okay, but we made a, I made an agenda request to meet with them last, like, a year ago in October. And so we, and so to understand what are they doing? What are they doing with our money? Plus they have state money already. And so, so, so now we, we have a priority, so we want to go off and get more money for them. I have no idea and, 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 and they may be a wonderful organization, but I don't have a clue what they do or don't do. And so that is extremely frustrating when we have indeed likely a very public social need for that type of an organization and need in, in the community. But there just seems to be this chasm or something. I, I don't know what it is. And so that is very frustrating for me as well. And again, I, I'm not trying to single them out. That just happened to come up tonight as an example of not knowing who's on first. Uh, and you probably don't want to hear this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Having spent a number of years in the military, if the left hand and the right hand don't know what's going on, you're in bad trouble, okay? And, and so I have personally experienced that. And, and it ain't a whole lot of fun. And so I'm at the point, you know, where, where I don't want to experience, it happens. But I under, but at the end of the day, and this is going to sound very myopic and it isn't, it is what it is. We're supposed to be working as a team. And I remember when we first took office, thanks to Brent, we took, at least I did, we took, I think others did. We took this course, this orientation course for new council members from the National League of Cities. I think there were five or six videos with attachments. I listened to all of them and I go back and I read the material. And I hate to say it, but we need some assistance to figure out who's on first here. So, a, and so I'll, I'll just leave it at that. So I would, so I'm glad to hear now there's some movement with respect and meeting with the, with the attorney about this, this issue, hopefully in certain.
And I'd like to add one thing.
About it in the fall and, you know, we got behind sort of the, was the Heritage Green Bond issuance that took up a lot of our time. And then we talked about January and for some reason there was a conflict in January. So I, yeah, like I say, I meet with him tomorrow at one o'clock. So I will press him on that and trying to get something scheduled.
I would just like to add one thing. There seems to be a misnomer about the priorities that, that I put in for Dorchester Community Center and for the Police Department for C G A to work on. That was approved by council on August fifteenth uh, under legislative priorities that Mr. Manuel had brought forward. Not only that, that was also for the tourism zone. So there should be no surprise that C G A is working on that. It wasn't done in a silo. It wasn't done by me. It was actually a consensus to move it forward. So that, I'm not sure where that's coming from, maybe, and well, we have lived a life since August. But that was approved by council and that's how they're moving forward with that. But it sounds like working on this, Director Phipps, there is a lot of concern about the procedures. It sounds like we are going to be meeting with the attorney in February, which I didn't know there was a request out there, which is fine. I mean, I don't need to know everything, but there obviously is a concern. So there was a request that must have been forwarded to Mr. Manuel, which is proper procedure. And so that, where I would go with this, if it is the will of the council, is any suggestions for the alterations or addition, subtraction, editing of this document? It should be sent to Mr. Manuel for his, you know, approval and sent to, I guess, Director Phipps. But we should send it to you with any type of changes that we may have?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that it did not come directly from council or the request for the meeting, the organizational meeting. That was something the attorney and I came up with that thought it would be a benefit to council.
Great, I think. Use something like that. But with that said, uh, do you think that changes should come through? I mean, should be brought to you, Mr. Manuel? And should there be?
Oh, definitely.
Time, okay, and is there a time that they should do this, no later than?
Really, the council, two, two weeks enough time for you to turn anything around? It sounds like to me that we want to have some sort of section that addresses when we're not following our rules of procedure first and foremost. So we can investigate that on our part. And we don't need to hear that directly from you. We've heard that directly from, from you guys. So, uh, other than that, I think Kelly had identified some other areas that we may want to discuss. I don't know if we want to discuss those tonight. One being, you know, last week we had to postpone our meeting because of inclement weather. This policy does not really address that. Is that something we would want to include within this policy? Or, uh, is it more of a consensus thing where we reach out to council and say, hey, you know, are you guys comfortable with not having the meeting due to the, the pending inclement weather? So we had talked about inclement weather. Was there another item, Kelly?
Uh, the other one was appearances at public events. I understand there was a, an occasion where there were three council members at a public event and they arrived there separately. There were no business was discussed, no ongoing business was discussed. But the, there could have been an appearance of impropriety by that. And I would go back to the most recent county incident where a member of the public reported county representatives, commissioners for being at a public event and actually engaging in discussion of ongoing business. That wasn't the case for our council members at this particular event. But a, an easy way to avoid any appearance of impropriety like that would be to inform the town manager if you're going to any public event. Even if you think nobody else is going, it's possible you all show up in the same place. So, um, just if you could let the town manager know, um, then we can do a announcement and use a release through the town webpage.
I think, um, and Madam Mayor, I would, I would ask if you're, I, I think on, on these items, if there are any clarifying questions of Ms. Phipps as far as the, what you proposed already, before we make alterations, just in order to aid us with what we're going to get to Mr. Manuel. I noticed that there was no agenda form request as part of this document that I saw. Is there one?
It's not, it says it goes to the town manager.
So, um, was, is that?
The rule.
That, that's just something that we had come up with last year as separate? Is that not being included? Is that something we're still considering? Is that against recommendation? Like where, where is that form in light of our rules and procedures?
Sorry, is that's not in the rules or procedures?
It's not. It is not. It says that any agenda request goes to the town manager and to the.
This is our previous way of doing it. Prior to the agenda item of request.
You're fresh on it and I am.
At least, I don't know, maybe I missed it.
Agenda request form is what you're saying.
Yeah.
It doesn't reference that.
Which it may not have, that.
Section four dot two, Kelly.
So that may not have made it to amending our rules and procedures, right? So, but look, that's why we go over this, right? Because if we want that, then it should be in our, our written rules and procedures. If we don't, then it doesn't make it. If we do want it, then it should be added as essentially an exhibit or an, an, another page here so that it can, can, can include it. And so, um, this Phipps, if in our review of our policies and procedures, we could, I know, you know, just for, for council. So we're going to include that as part of our discussion, I would, I would assume, because there's some angst about it.
Okay.
So align our language to the practice.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we kind of adopted it without formally, it looks like adopting it. Or, or maybe legally adopting it, perhaps is the right way to put it. By amending our actual rules and procedures.
And I think we should vote on that, is, is that how we want it to work? It work, it works well if he's setting the agenda, that's what it says, and he reviews it with the mayor. Then the, the procedure works. I don't know where that form came from or why it was necessary and how any id, agenda items were just dismissed and disregarded. We didn't vote not to add them to the agenda, they just didn't appear on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever excluded an item that was presented as, at least with a form. It was just, and then it is brought to the council and the council decides. I don't.
There were one or two brought to the council and there was a discussion and then when they wanted to, one was not, there, there was not a consensus to bring it to the, to put it on an agenda.
On a future agenda by council, not by staff.
Using the form?
Yes.
If it came to the, there was two of them. One was for a, uh, maybe looking at a firm to, uh, do more community engagement.
Right.
That was, okay, it was, it's, let's not do it. Okay, that's fine. And there was another, I can, but there were three others that weren't. That is, we had a briefing of the chief on a security issue. We had a briefing from our I T guy.
And we, look, we voted on the, the approval form.
Right.
It was in order to make sure that we didn't have endless agenda items by each council and have, you know, a hundred items per meeting. Um, and we tried it and maybe there's a different way, you know? I mean, obviously we didn't, it didn't make it to our rules and procedures as a, as a formal part of our document. So we need to address that either way.
Okay.
And then I had another question, just for clarification. In the public forum part, I think.
Five, three, public comments?
Yes. Yeah, so, um, I think, and, and this is, this comes as clarification for my purposes. I know here, um, it says, "Public comment participations shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to address any town business. However, public comment participation is not intended to serve as a forum for debate with the council." It had been relayed to me, and I, maybe I misinterpreted it in the past, that during public forum or part of our business meeting, that it was discouraged of council to address comments that were made in public forum. And I don't see that here. And maybe there's no real place in our current agenda to allow for that. But it would seem like to me that it's not prohibited by our policies and procedures, at least acknowledging by council, other than, um, you know, either mayor, mayor pro temp conduct, conducting the meeting. Is that a fair reading of what we have in place?
I, I believe that paragraph gives you the flexibility to do that. You, I, the way I interpreted, as I'm reading it, you could ask questions, but you are not required to answer questions of the public during public comment.
Yeah, very good reason for that, I understand. The other question I had, I guess, and this may be moot when we're talking about our agenda and placing things on the agenda. It looks like here we're still, and, and this is why I review these, we still are looking at it as business meeting versus other types of meetings.
Session.
Right? And so I guess as we're looking at this, moving forward. Right? And so I guess as we're looking at this, moving forward, we're going to have to identify how we structure our language throughout as to our current setup. Because when it talks about the council member basically coming to the first business meeting of the month with those agenda item requests, they're all business meetings now, correct? I mean, they're, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're trying with our new calendar, we're trying to sort of transition back to, you know, having a work session, the first meeting of the month maybe be a work session ideally. You know, one of the reasons we went to regular business meetings as opposed to work sessions was because of the ARPA money, honestly, and we were getting quotes and the quotes were expiring before they could work their way through our process for approval. You know, the ARPA money is going to be sunsetting, I guess, in, well, in the calendar year, I think it all has to be spoken for, so to speak. But at the same time, I think, depending on the economy, we're starting to see a little bit slower pace. So it may be a time where we can transition back to a, a work session after our budget is completed, obviously, and get into more of that traditional work session, business meeting. What shall I say, like what Councilman Winkler said, you know, when, maybe it's just a, a session where we have, you know, I won't call it brainstorming, but ideas and sort of, you know, each individual councilman's initiative, which I think we will get into somewhat during Karina's meeting next week, where we will talk about initiatives of the council to give you guys an opportunity to express, you know, what you feel is important. That's more as it relates to fiscal. But at the same time, it's, it's, I want to, I want to give council the right opportunity to express what you want. I feel like now we're kind of confined and it's like we have to stay within these lanes, whereas a work session gives you the opportunity to have more of a, an open dialogue amongst council members. And I think that's very beneficial, because that's where sometimes ideas come and grow.
And I think.
Right now, we're so structured and, you know, discussion items on these items, legislation on these items, and then, you know, you guys report on what your committees did. So there's not much room for conversation outside of very specific agenda topics.
And I think we tried it because we had legislation that we were passing, as you said, every, almost every meeting, and then we would have to call it a special council meeting versus a work session. And maybe this isn't, now that you have indicated that the money is now going away and it's, and it's maybe not as much legislation, it would be nice to sit down off the dais and be able to discuss things in depth instead of just having truncated conversations here. So I, that is something that is really worth exploring, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I would concur with that, because the issues that we, we have faced and will face, and future councils will face, are very now complex, interrelated issues that are not necessarily tied up in a neat package. And then I just have a question, if I may, there's section two point one that talks about town hall meetings. The town council may host a, a meeting. Does that preclude an individual town council member for hosting their own town hall in their ward, for instance?
You said two point one?
Yeah, section two point one, adoption of manual calendar and meeting schedule under the item town hall meetings. Does that preclude an individual town council member to say, I'd like to have a town hall meeting in my ward to talk about issues of importance to Ward four or whatever it is? Does that preclude me from doing that or somebody from doing?
Although that reads, it would be as you as a body, not as individuals.
Right, but can an individual coun- council member do that?
Yeah. I think we've had them in the past.
It's just not written. The attorney and the attorney said that we could have them.
Maybe the language needs to be added.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and it just needs to reflect our practice.
Anything else? I do have one other thing that needs to, attendance at meetings just for proper notification. I noticed that it says on one of them, on the day, if it's going to be, if you're going to attend virtually, it says on the day. But if, I don't see where it says, if you're not going to be able to attend or you have no intention of intending, attending, what the notification should be. And that way, that way we know if we have a quorum or not moving forward on there.
What section is that?
The one that I see is participation in six dash eight. It says, "Honored before the day of a meeting, a town council who wishes to participate through electronic means must notify the mayor or in the mayor's absence, a person will chair that the member is unable to attend the meeting in person."
You said six point eight?
Uh, yes. But it doesn't say if you're not attending a meeting. That's an in-person meeting, what, when you should notify someone. And it, and it really is for a quorum.
Not to be like pile on, but we have six point seven, six point eight, duty to vote, six point nine, methods of voting, section six point eight particip- so we have a numbering issue also.
I don't know if, that's not the only one.
Oh, yeah. I, I see.
Because I was reading along with you, and I'm like, that's not what my six point eight's, you know, that it says.
So that should be six ten.
All right. Now I've got you. At least I'm in the stadium.
And that's a great point about that particular section, whatever section it is now, but and, and a courtesy to the entire council, have an understanding if someone can't be there or is going to attend electronically, so we all know. Or rather than just one person or you or the mayor.
Yeah, it's the will of council. You guys are interested in that.
I mean, just for, just for courtesy, hey, I'm not going to be here, or I'm going to be.
Where the council member could copy his council members if he's gone up.
Okay, if they're attending, oh, sorry. If they're attending remotely, it does state that at the beginning of the meeting, whoever presides over the meeting will state that council person, blah, 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 will be joining us virtually. But in that, if someone doesn't, is unable to attend, for whatever reason, there is nothing that I saw in here that states who to notify, if it's an in-person and they're not attending virtually.
So would it be fair then to rename six ten and probably renumber it to, instead of participation, attendance by remote, electronic communication, just make this participation, participation and attendance in town council meetings and include that clause within there? So it's all the participation is in one section, whether it's in person or virtual?
I would be in favor of that, if it's the will of the council.
And I would also suggest that it be moved further up in the section, closer to quorum, since that's really what the attendance is related to.
Does anybody have any objections to that? You could make that, those changes. That would be right. And also, I don't know if this, a weather protocol might be, as we kind of discussed on that, added. And then the other thing is, we have something about the appointments to boards and commissions, but there is not an attendance requirement clause there. Is it something that we could add into the procedures that says, you know, refer to the code or put in something about that for attendance of the elected officials for the requirement or the expectations of, of attending a commissioner committee or a board?
Certainly, and especially since those requirements differ by board and committee.
Not to add more work to you, so sorry about that. Does anybody else have any suggestions?
As I understand it, Director Phipps said that we, or Mr. Manuel said we're going to be taking a look at this and offering suggestions and comments over the next two weeks. So, that's what I'm going to do from here.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we could bring it back. We could have another discussion. I don't know if we have it tentatively scheduled. It's the second meeting in February. So the second meeting in February, so next week is the budget work session. Following week will be planning commission, so that'll give us ample time, I think.
Prepare to answer.
Prepare it. They'll give us two weeks to, to turn it around. Yeah, obviously, if you need more time, then we can take more time, but.
That would be somewhere near the time of this closed session we were discussing earlier as well.
All right. So two weeks it is. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, moving on to our next part of the agenda is legislation. We have ordinance twenty four point zero two, fiscal year 2023 budget amendment for introduction.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council on Ordinance Concerning Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget for the purpose of amending the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 FY24 Financial Plan Budget and all matters generally relating thereto.
Wonderful. Thank you. Brings us to resolution twenty four dash zero one, Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Replacement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this item is for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Replacement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for construction of the Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station and all matters generally relating thereto.
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero one as?
I was waiting on you to catch it.
Yeah, and we, it was even, I see now. I was looking at the big blown up twenty. The previous ordinance, twenty four zero two fiscal year 2024. But.
Twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, right. So I read the title with the twenty twenty four. Yes. So I don't know if we should, I'm trying to think parliamentary procedure, how we could back that motion.
There wasn't a motion because it's just introduction.
Okay. So if I could reintroduce that, Madam Mayor, I think that would be great. All right, and I'll make sure I get it right. Ordinance twenty four zero two fiscal year 2023 budget amendment for introduction and ordinance concerning amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2023 Financial Plan Budget for the purpose of amending the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2023 FY23 Financial Plan Budget and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you. All right. Now, resolution twenty four dash zero one. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero one as presented?
Adam, I would make a motion to adopt resolution, I don't have it in front of me, twenty four oh two, twenty, twenty two oh one.
Twenty four oh.
Twenty four oh one, Mary Ball Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Replacement as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Brings us to new business. Before we go to the commission reports, I would like to bring to council the appointment, I would like to appoint David Winkler to the Design Review Board and to the Historic Preservation Commission to serve those two vacant officio, ex officio spots. Do I have a motion to accept that nomination or appointment, I should say?
Madam, I would make a motion to approve those nomination or appointments to the boards as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, welcome aboard. And with that, Councilman Winkler, do you have a commission report?
I will, the next meeting, hopefully, I will have a subsequent to our January nineteenth meeting where I officially take my responsibilities or my roles, so.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I'm sure you are going to be a great asset to both committees. Councilman Challenger?
No, no.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, new report. Councilman Jenkins?
Real quick, the Park and Recreation Commission will, will not be meeting this month. We're, we're scheduling it for next month. And this is a highlight, we had our quarterly meeting of the Tri-County Council Pedestrian Infrastructure Advisory Committee, which I'm with Chair, two weeks ago. It was, unfortunately, it was somewhat of a, not a very productive meeting, because we were trying to discuss our, the reasons, next priorities for pedestrian and related projects. But the day before was when the Secretary of Transportation announced the, the cuts. So we're putting that on hold and we're going to wait till tomorrow to see what, how it affects the other projects in all three counties, much less La Plata. So I, I suspect I'll be on, on a phone call shortly or Zoom meeting to talk about that. And then I, I will probably be, they have, the other committee, they have a Regional Infrastructure Advisory Committee, which we report to, so I, I suspect I will now be invited to attend those meetings as well, either Zoom or in person. But just so you know, that that's an active process, and the town is represented not only by me, but we've had, and the past Director Harrington has provided input as well. And I would just again urge us to pay attention, because it is a walkability issue, which is near and dear to my heart. And then I'm, I will be sending out an email shortly to the Town Center Board. As you may recall, we, we're going to wait after the holidays to meet again. And so our board members are doing a kind of a reset, they get an update of what's going on in the county and the town. So I will be sending out an email to see if we can reconvene and then come back to the council with perhaps a opportunity to have a work session with them on their priorities, if there are any, and any guidance from the council. Thank you.
All right. And then, as we have discussed, legislative session has begun. Saw Mr. Manuel up there for the opening of Legislative Day, Legislative Day, and for our Southern Maryland Municipal Association meeting. So that was up in Annapolis. As mentioned, I will be testifying on Thursday in support of State Bill fourteen, the tourism zone. So that, that is going to be a lot of fun, I think. I saw, and thank you to Councilman Challenger and Councilwoman Bryant Ward yesterday, and the chief and two of his captains there for attending Dr. Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast put on by the Charles County NAACP. It was, it was a cold day as it normally is, but always such a wonderful day to have everyone gathered in his memory, which would have been his ninety-fifth birthday yesterday. Just a reminder, on the second of February is the polar bear plunge. So I hope it's like a nice balmy day like today. That would be a lot of fun to do. On February ninth, Charles County hosts the Night to Shine. They are still seeking volunteers. They're about seventy people short. They're looking for buddies. If you haven't had the opportunity to participate in this amazing event, please consider doing that. It's one night and it's all about those adults living with disabilities. And I tell you, it has changed my life immensely to see the love that the community gives to, to this night. So they are looking for individuals to help. And then on February twelfth, the president of the MML and the CEO and members of the staff of MML will be coming down here for a Southern Maryland tour. They're going to Port Tobacco, Indian Head, La Plata, Leonardtown, Chesapeake and Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. So please mark your calendars. If you are around February twelfth, that would be wonderful to have lunch with them and just really. February twelfth, that would be wonderful to have lunch with them and just really talk up our wonderful town. And with that, at seven forty-nine, I will adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Right. Right. Does ordinance twenty four dash zero two need to be corrected?
Two minutes, wait a little bit, two minutes, but you know what?